City meeting, hierarchical, regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District, tonight, Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Tonight's meeting is being held in the District Administration Building and livestreamed through YouTube. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of meditation. Next on the agenda are tenure appointments, Dr. Holmes.
So if I can invite all of our tenure candidates up to the front over to our right side. If you can all come up together and our principals and directors will be presenting them this evening. If you don't mind coming up and lining up just a little bit, please, that would be great. So as you all know, the granting of tenure is a significant investment on behalf of the school district. We are basically putting our confidence in you that, as you have done for the first several years of your service here in the district, that you will continue to do so well into the future. But you've demonstrated your readiness and your willingness to take on that task. So it's with great enthusiasm that we're here to celebrate your accomplishments, but also share with you our expectations and our extreme knowledge that we know that you will fulfill that commitment well into the future as you fulfill your careers here in the district as well. So without further ado, I'm going to ask your administrators to introduce you and the tenure area of which will be granted tenure tonight. So Ms. Carmen, since you're to my right, I'll start with you first.
Thank you. Looks like we can go one by one?
One by one.
Okay. This is Kristi Leva and she is a TA in the Children's Department.
Keep running though.
So Fred Zomorski, he is a math teacher at Naperville. And then finally, the children's group Charles Doyle, special education teacher in the United States.
Oh, good evening. Jared Brydets, the tenure area in the area of special education.
Our next candidate is Roseanne Lesser, her tenure area is in the area of science, chemistry, discipline, and pedagogy. Ms. Deanna Lenz, our director of guidance. Ms. Danielle Pagod, special educator. And Ms. Pika Kuklis, also a special educator.
So part of the tenure process for us here in the school district, each of our candidates begins a tenure portfolio when they start with the school district. And both digitally and in writing, our candidates have submitted those. So anytime you would want to come up and see them tonight, do so free. Some have submitted digitally also to the Board already to review, but it's a great, showing a great sign of all the work that they have done to get to this point in their career tonight. So I'm going to turn over to the Board of Education for their consideration now to run through the resolutions for the granting of tenure tonight. I just ask that you let the Board get through all of the resolutions and we will offer congratulations to all of you and we'll take a picture together to celebrate the moment.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Charles Doyle and Pika Kuklis, Shannon and Billy. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Charles Doyle in the tenure area of special education effective September 1st, 2022. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Pika Kuklis in the tenure area of special education effective October 15th, 2022. Am I doing it correctly? And I continue with another motion? Okay. I need a motion for the appointment of tenure, of the candidates of Deanna Lenz and Roseanne Lesser, Shannon and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendents of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Deanna Lenz in the tenure area of guidance effective August 1st, 2022. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Roseanne Lesser in the tenure area of chemistry effective September 1st, 2022. I need a motion to approve the tenure of Kristi Leva and Danielle Pagod. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to go. I figured we were going to do it at the end. Any need to do all in favor for each one or all at the end?
You could do it just right there.
So I had Shannon and Tom on that one. And then, I already read Daniel. And then I need a motion to approve the appointment of tenure candidates Jared Brydets and Frederick Zomorski, Shannon and Billy. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Jared Brydets. I'm saying it correctly?
Yeah.
In the tenure area of special education effective September 1st, 2022. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Frederick Zomorski in the tenure area of mathematics effective September 1st, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, everyone. Which do you want to move? I apologize.
You have?
Okay. I apologize for some last minute filling. Apologize for that. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Kristi Leva in the tenure area of teaching assistant effective September 1st, 2022. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Danielle Pagod in the tenure area of special education effective September 1st, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Congratulations.
If you can all squeeze together, Mr. Carter is going to come over and take one picture. I think we're good. Congratulations again. And you are all more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. However, if you want to go and celebrate with your families and enjoy the rest of the night, we understand. Again, congratulations.
I need a motion to reconvene the normal business portion of the meeting. Shannon and Tom. Next, I need to add item 4.1. I need a motion for resolution number 4.1. Jeremy, Shannon? Be it resolved that the board hereby sustains in part and denies in part an appeal in connection with student discipline of student number 041922. Be it further resolved that the board hereby determines to expunge a five-day short-term suspension of student number 041922 on procedural grounds from March 24th through March 30th, 2022. And be it finally resolved that the appeal of student number 041922's long-term suspension dated March 30th, 2022, effectuating a two-day superintendent suspension on March 31st, 2022 and April 1st, 2022 is hereby denied. All in favor? Opposed? Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor. For those of you who are not familiar with the procedure of privilege of the floor, we now have a sign-up sheet. I do respectfully ask for two minutes in time. And also to just to reiterate that privilege of the floor does not necessarily give you an answer at this time. Answers, if they are relevant, will be answered individually or in a group setting, ad hoc, if deemed. Liam Lynch.
If you could please say. Hello. I'm a sophomore at the United States High School. I'm speaking today to have the reimbursement baseball team. We respectfully request a TARP to cover the infield and the baseball field of the middle school. The second base area has a history of flooding and has already been the reason for multiple game cancellations, rescheduled games, and indoor practices. A TARP would not only help the JV team, but would also help the modified team since we chose the field to play. We hope the board will consider helping us to make the field more playable and to help us play the sport that we love.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Amy Gardner.
Can I stand up here or is there anything?
That's fine. People can hear you.
Hi, I'm just here to request reimbursement for the AP history trip for my senior. My daughter's a senior and we incurred a cancellation fee based on a meeting that was had to cancel it. But we had no knowledge of the meeting and we weren't included in the meeting. So I've been in touch with World Strides and they can't give us any money back. But I feel that the board made this decision and we weren't included in the decision. And now we're all incurring a $700 cancellation fee. And my daughter can't postpone the trip because she's a senior this year. So I'm just asking the board to reimburse us the cancellation fee that we incurred due to your decision. That's really good. Thank you.
Heather Larson.
Hi, I am here requesting the same $700 for the same trip that my senior daughter is not able to go on. The decision was made to postpone the trip without any parent input. We weren't part of the discussion. We had no say in it. We spent thousands of dollars on a trip that you decided was going to be postponed without any thought to the financial repercussions for the families that actually paid for it. So at a minimum, we understand that we have to pay to cover the insurance that we paid. I'm totally fine paying for the insurance, which was $225 for me, $2.50 for others, $1.50 for others. Everybody's was different. But the $700 that they are calling a transfer fee for next year's trip should not be the responsibility of parents of children that are not able to go on the trip because they are graduating seniors. If the school board or the teacher in charge would like to find a replacement for my daughter and you guys can then get reimbursed, that would be great. I shouldn't be in charge of finding a replacement for a trip during an ongoing war in Europe. So I expect a response for the $700 request.
Thank you. Next, Kristi Cryne. Yeah, and then Jake Cryne. So do you want to present together?
We'll present together. We're here for the same reason, but I think it brings to light a bigger problem. The district should have dealt with World Strides directly and not just left it to a teacher. And I think the district needs to look at their policies moving forward with everything going on in the world. I understand there's a lot on your plate. But with everything going on in the world, you can't give these teachers free rein to do what they did before the pandemic. I mean, that just made no sense. And, you know, should have thought it out a little more before we just opened the floodgates to do what we did before COVID.
Thank you. Kristi, you're good?
No, I don't. And it's not about that. But I will say this, that the things that were not mentioned are the amount of time that parents are spending on the phone with World Strides and that. But no, my question is actually about the budget. And it's come to light now, the $5 million extra amount of money that's sitting in the fund. And I'm just really trying to understand why we function as if we don't have money or that we don't bring in the supports that we clearly need, just in all different areas. You walk into the bathrooms at the high school and they're just really, really dirty. And the water fountains, they say, kids say, just taste disgusting. That's inexcusable. We funded water fountains, we had filters. We funded water fountains, we had filters, and we definitely need support staff. I know that the staff put out, they gave some sort of information back. I would say that it would be really interesting to know from the staff what they need to have a happier place. I know we were here as mothers and fathers a couple of months ago about the mask mandate. And the theme that rang true was people are really unhappy. Kids are unhappy. Staff is unhappy. We have a lot of money that we could be doing something with instead of functioning like we have no money. I don't understand it. It's a lot of money. And that should be able to bring the whole environment to a different place. So that's kind of, I know I'll hear no answer, but it would be really nice if the public had some clarity on what we could do different.
So just to address specifically the capital reserves that you brought up. When a board of education is authorized to create a capital reserve, there's only a small scope for which that money can be appropriated. So if it creates a capital reserve that says it can be used for roofing, for adding in addition, for replacing windows, that money then can't be removed and put into personnel. So the other things that you brought up with redoing bathrooms or looking at piping or things like that, that money can't be used for that. It has to be authorized. So similar to, it has to be authorized to put into a capital reserve. At the same time, it has to be approved to take it out. So if we were going to, similar to what we're asking to do with that money now to replace the roof and the HVAC at Scottstown, this next capital reserve that the community is going to be asked for in this budget as well, those items that you just referenced could be put on there as well as the next round of items to be addressed in the building. So as we create the capital reserve and try not to ask the community to borrow additional money, we can go and cross those things off the list as we work through.
I appreciate the insight. It helps.
Can I just say one thing that I like? But the capital reserve during COVID was totally beefed up because you had operational money available. It was moved from operations to capital reserve during the period of COVID.
Correct. That's where efficiency savings came from.
We could have done it then before we moved it to capital reserve.
Well, there are certain thresholds. So let's say you have a million dollars that you didn't spend. There are certain thresholds that, number one, sometimes they have to be put before the public for a vote. So you can't just go out and say, okay, I'm going to spend a million dollars to put a roof on. You have to put some of those things out before the public for a vote. But also the capital reserve can only be for a set amount at the same time. So when that money gets moved in, let's say the capital reserve was set for not to exceed $5 million, which this was created in 2019 was, the board can't put more than $5 million in that account.
With this new, I'm curious, how long is it good for?
What's the term usually for the capital reserve?
Usually two years. So we have, it's not like we're going to put $5 million in this year.
Correct.
It could be $5 million over 10 years.
Correct. Right. We could have $100,000 this year. We could have $2,000,000. So it's from efficiency savings. So let's use the example of energy costs. Let's stay optimistic. Let's assume energy costs come down. Maybe I'm being ignorant and blissfully optimistic, but let's assume they come down next year and we're under budget and we have $200,000 out of our energy line. That could potentially be transferred at the end of the year into the capital reserve and saved over time. So as you accumulate that money, let's say it's going to be $100,000 to replace all of the bathrooms in the high school. You then could take that $100,000 out, fix those bathrooms, and still have a million dollars left in the capital reserve. And next year, you go out to the voters and say, hey, we want to replace the next roof. We want to replace plumbing, whatever the case may be. You can spend that money over time, similar to the way that you're saving it over time. But at the same time, I need to come back to the voters, every, the board needs to come back to the voters every single time to ask for permission to use the money that the public gave us permission to save.
Right. But I think, and I agree with you and I understand that, but I think part of Kristi's concerns are that there's some operational stuff that aren't being addressed. Painting the bathroom doesn't make, cleaning, cleaning, water fountain, those are all things that are operational issues that should be addressed on an ongoing basis that aren't being addressed in the high school. I can't speak to the other schools. I'm going to have another custodian.
Sure. And there is another custodian position. So when we increase.
To add another one to the school.
Right. When we increase square footage, when we increase the size of the facilities in the high school, we didn't add additional staff. It's not an excuse, but it will help to mitigate some of those concerns that you bring to light, keeping up with some of those regular maintenance pieces that are on an ongoing basis throughout the day.
And no way of lying.
Thank you, Dr. Currie.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Next on privilege of the floor, Jennifer Kirk.
Hi, thank you, Natalie. Additionally, I'm talking about the AP World Strides trip. In addition to what everybody else was saying, you know, multiple emails did go, whether the board was aware of it or not, the opportunity for them to change venue, change trip location was also options that could have been made. And the school made the decision, or Ms. Panzer, who was in charge of the trip, made the decision to roll it forward. So not only are we being charged a transfer fee, we're being charged a transfer fee to go to the exact same location. So the locations we're referring to are Hungary, was it Hungary, Austria, and the Czech Republic. All that are direct orders to Ukraine in a current crisis that is happening in Europe. We are not looking at a trip that was looking to go to Paris or, you know, visit Queen in England. This was a clear war zone area that was being expected to go. Multiple calls, multiple emails were sent out by many families. I know myself have multiple emails on file where I had sent records from the travel.gov websites indicating maps where the entire Central Europe countries were in red, the ledger read that it was a do not travel to. But yet we were only told, we were given the option to transfer forward. We could sell our trip to somebody else or look to transfer, look to cancel and assume the cost of a cancellation fee. And our travel insurance would hopefully recoup some of that. So this $700 is not even a discussion that was presented to us when decisions were being made. And like I said, no other option of, well, what would you like to do? Would you like to consider maybe Paris instead? What about a lovely, you know, Italian Riviera? It was basically rolled forward to go to the exact same location in Europe that is currently in a war-torn situation. So I do want that to be noted and considered when the board is considering whether or not they can help us, support us, or even just fight on our behalf with World Strides. Thank you.
Next, Karen Brown.
I'm speaking on the same behalf. I'm in a little bit different situation. I called the first time. I was disconnected twice after I called back. I got a representative. I asked to speak with the manager. The manager then told me that I would have to pay the $400 to move my, to cancel my trip. Sorry, I did not speak to the manager then. They told me that they would call me on Monday. When I waited for the call, I called again. So I've called four times. Now they're telling me, because I asked Marie Panzer if I could get the rep person that she deals with, they're charging me $1,078. So some of these people have gotten a full refund except for $400 and then the $700 tacked on. I'm being charged, because now it's in my file, $1,078 to cancel. If I have my daughter go next year, I'll also have the $700 transfer fee on top of that. I know for a fact that Valley Central and Chester just went on a very similar trip. So Chester went to two of the three places that we were supposed to go. Not granted, not saying that I would have sent my daughter, but the trip did go. And they said it was because they are not refunding our money because the board of ed canceled, not them. World Strides are canceling. So they are not going to refund my $1,078. I have no problem possibly sending her next year. The only problem, this company has been in Chapter 11 two years ago. So I have a problem leaving my almost $5,000 with this company. If I want to send her again, that should be my choice to pay the money at that point. So I feel like this was, this is a company that if our school is using, we should be supported as parents. Especially, I paid the extra insurance, the top insurance, because of COVID reasons, not knowing. And I, with that insurance, I made sure I could cancel it two days prior. Nobody could, no manager will get on the phone and talk to me about this possible war going on, that they will give me my money back. So I'm very disappointed in the company. I'm disappointed in the whole, how this whole thing unraveled and that I could be possibly out $1,100 almost. And, you know, this was supposed to be an experience that these kids had, this group of kids has lost everything. So, you know, on top of that, on the $400 that they want everybody to cancel with, that they want us to submit a claim to possibly get 75% of that $400, not including the $700 that they're tacking on at this point. So there's a lot of, and it depends on who you get on the phone. So there's no set for anybody. If you talk to everybody, everybody's got different answers. Everybody's got different amounts back, which doesn't fly as a company. I would just like to ask one question in regards to Kristi's comment. I believe the high school has brand-new bathrooms that was done through the capital project. Is there any reason why those two bathrooms in the main corridor are not open at this point?
So the new bathrooms are obviously in the older section of the quad of the building. Were not redone, not refurbished?
No, the ones right from the auditorium. They're gorgeous. They're nice bathrooms. I don't even think the kids even know that they're there.
I don't want to put this mark on the spot. Can you just speak to the protocol on how you're?
The concerns around those bathrooms are they're primarily for the use when we have events at the auditorium. Because they are single stalls, there is a safety concern that a student could theoretically lock themselves in there and it creates a safety concern. That's why the multiple stalls are the preferred bathrooms. It can be better auditor. You know, definitely take into account there's things that we put the fourth quarters in and put attention to in the building. But that's why those aren't here the last of the city stuff with the other ones are.
I just, I didn't even know they were there until somebody said it and they're really nice. I mean, so even for like basketball games and things like that, we're going into two stalls and there's a large crowd. Maybe that, you know what I mean? I know you guys have different bathroom procedures that are going on at the high school due to very concerning reasons. But maybe if, you know, if they're up to code and they're ready to be used, maybe they could be opened up and allow the public to use them. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight with their comments. We do, we do listen. We do appreciate it. And you know what? Normally, we don't comment, but I will say, you know, thank you for coming. And it sounds like there is an issue with World Strides. I'm not passing the buck. But definitely, you know, as a board member, we will look into it and see if there is something.
Can I add something or do I need to wait?
No, go ahead.
So I just was on the phone. I'm going to be honest. I have been on the phone with them at least 16 times.
Me too.
And I'm off this week, so I was on with Jose for the 12th time in the last two weeks. And he said the reason we're getting charged a $700 fee is because the cancellation was done too close to the departure date of the trip. So again, that was something that we were not aware, that it was being canceled at the time. And that was the board's decision. So if you were going to cancel it, you should have been aware of the timeframe that allotted it so that we didn't get charged. Or that, I just feel like it's, it's not, it's not fair for us to have to pay 700 times how many people are here for a trip that we were not a part of discussing. There was never even like a discussion, like with the war raging on, what do you think? What, where else could we go? There was no return calls when we asked the teacher. And I just feel like it has to be addressed. I mean, in addition to that, my younger daughter was supposed to go to Takil Mockingbird. I didn't even get crazy about that $100, but that was never discussed either. So I just feel like all these decisions that are being made, I'm requesting that you just include the parents of the kids that are going to be part of that event. It makes sense to me. I don't understand why that's not something that's in the forefront when you're making a decision. Include all the parties that are included in it. So I just feel that that money now is because of a poor decision on whoever. But the lateness is what I was, the reason I was given today is the lateness of the cancellation is why we are incurring the $700 now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And we also paid $300 to move it from last year to this year because of COVID. So like, this is ridiculous.
Thank you. I just want to add, I know that my vision lay out on February 24th. And at that time, the war had already begun and our trip wasn't due till even so deep for months. So at that point, it was 42 days from the time of departure. So I'm also not sure why Ms. Panzer did not present it to the board until that close to departure time. Okay, now, she as a staff member and the organization of this trip does not pay to go on these trips. She is comped for bringing the tour group. Additional to any of the staff members that she brought, it's generally a one per 10. And they get the trip for free. So, you know, her hesitation to maybe present it to you to then make the decision. I'm sure maybe you weren't aware that there was these policies in place. But that war broke out and it was concerned to travel to these countries long before the trip was due to depart. So thanks considerable.
Next on the agenda, we have the president's report. We're going to skip that. I'm seven on the agenda, legislative update. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Currie?
Thank you. So I just want to bring one item to everyone's attention. Ms. Mark, if you don't mind helping you with the good news that you shared, I'll let you share it.
Oh, sure. We have been contacted by an alum of Goshen High School Brigadier General. Larry. So he is a five-star general who did graduate from Goshen High School. And he had reached out to see if it would be possible for him to come in and speak with our students. And so we were able to coordinate with his liaisons to set an event that'll be for our junior class. He's really passionate about helping students find their path, be it in the military or otherwise, and just communicate the message through his own story that if you encounter a roadblock, you know, how to go about using skills to overcome it to achieve what is your passion. So he's really excited. He'll be also stopping at the BFW while he's here in Goshen visiting. So it's a huge honor that we'll be able to host him on May 19th. That's a Thursday. It'll be in the morning. We'll be able to livestream the event. And in addition, you know, we thought it was special for the juniors. The seniors will, in large part, be on the trip at that point. It'll be really kind of a pep rally for their senior year and keeping them motivated, keeping them getting to the end of the year. In addition, Lieutenant Colonel Hutchins said he'll be coming in. We were also able to coordinate with the Army Reserve bases to talk about, you know, the choices, the importance of choices once you graduate. This will be in early May. Again, it'll be in a 9:00 AM. This will be exclusively for our seniors. And just kind of keeping them focused before they start the end-of-year events. And it's nice because we haven't yet been able to have as many whole-class assemblies. So, you know, certainly quite an honor and a benefit to both the school and community.
I'd also like to welcome tonight Ms. Lorraine Van Poel-Lamaran, who is on our board resolution tonight to begin with us as our new Assistant Superintendent for Business starting on July 1st. So welcome. So as a reminder, the board will be asked to approve the budget proposal for the 2223 fiscal year. As a reminder, our proposed budget is a 0% on the tax levy for the second year in a row. As we have discussed, there are two propositions also that will be included that we will be asking the community to consider. Number one is a capital improvement project that will be funded between the $5 million in capital reserve and the just over $4 million that we have received in federal money that will be used to replace the roof at Scottstown Avenue Elementary and also HVAC upgrades throughout Scottstown. And then if the bids come in favorable pending the approval of the proposition, we would move on to additional roofing at CIS as well. The second proposition will be the creation of a new capital reserve since we will hopefully be using the $5 million for the renovations at Scottstown. And again, that would be for a 10-year period from efficiency savings, money that's not spent at the end of the year, to be able to accumulate.
not spent at the end of the year, to be able to accumulate money to care for our facilities over time. The purpose again of a capital reserve is for us to be able to mitigate spending, to have to not go back and ask for additional borrowing, and it allows for us to keep up with work over time rather than having to go back and ask for additional monies through any kind of borrowing note. We also will have our public hearing and budget documents available after the pending approval of the board adopting the budget. That will be available on May third, twenty-twenty-two. And then the board also will have the opportunity during the Boson's annual budget meeting on April twenty-first at six PM, to vote on the administrative component of the Boson's budget as well, which is an annual vote, and boards have the option to take part. Anything tonight?
Thank you, Dr. Currie.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Personnel, and Technology Report, Mr. Jason Clark.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Solti. Two items for you this evening. First, science Olympiad. So our junior team comprised of students in grades six to nine had the opportunity to compete at East Syracuse-Lenoir High School in the state event. There were forty teams competing, and our junior team placed fifth overall. So we're very, very proud of what they've done. Last year, they had a nineteenth place finish, so you can see the grade increase. And again, we're very proud of them and their efforts. Of the eleven competitors that we had attend and compete, almost all of them, if not every one of them, received individual medals as well. So again, it just shows, you know, just how great we're doing in that area, in addition to many others, of course. So I just want to say thank you to all of our coaches, Ms. Pohke, most importantly, Ms. Endanto and her efforts at the middle school, all the volunteers, and of course, we're grateful for the efforts of our students. Also, for what I would say is the sixth consecutive year, however, I know that we could have a COVID year in between that span, the Boson Central School District has been recognized once again by the NAMM Foundation as one of the best communities in the nation for music, being a great music community. So we're very proud of that. This is something that, you know, it doesn't go to just anyone. We're one of seven hundred thirty-eight school districts nationwide to receive that award, and to do that year after year shows the quality of our program, of our teachers, our administrators, more importantly, our student participants in the program. But it's also due in large part to the support provided by our community, our school board. Everyone has a piece in that. So again, we're very proud of that accomplishment, and we look forward to achieving that level year after year. It's a great achievement for our program. And that is it for me, Mrs. Currie.
Thank you, Ms. Currie.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I need a motion for the consent agenda. Jeremy and Shannon. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Opposed? There's no old business. New business. I need a motion for twelve point one, appointment of Assistant Superintendent for Business. Tom, Shannon. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education appoints Lorraine Van Put Lammeran? Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. As Assistant Superintendent for Business at a gross salary of two thousand and ten, two thousand and-
Arguing.
Two hundred and ten thousand, effective July first, twenty-twenty-two, in the tenure area of Assistant Superintendent for Business with a tenure date of July first, twenty-twenty-six. Ms. Van Put Lammeran, I'm going to honestly, this is going to be hard for me, I'm sorry, has school district business leader certification. Ms. Van Put Lammeran is replacing Louise Lynch. All in favor?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda, I need an approval for minutes. Jeremy? Billy? Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes for the April fourth, twenty-twenty-two regular board meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Twelve point three, I need a motion to adopt the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year budget and property tax report card. Maureen, am I going to do like a roll call? Can I have a motion? Jeremy and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education adopts the budget property tax report card and school district budget notice for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year in the amount of eighty-three million, seven hundred thousand. Will do a roll call. Billy? Shannon? Tom?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Did I say yes? And Jason is not there. All those in favor? Can I read you said yes? Thank you. Next on the agenda, twelve point four, I need a motion to authorize an appropriation to pay all bus bands. Jeremy and Shannon. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of Boson Central School District authorizes an appropriation of one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty to the general fund from the unappropriated fund balance for the purpose of paying the balance of all remaining bus bands, including any interest due. The appropriation shall be one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars in A nine seven three two point six zero zero bus band principal and four thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars in A nine seven three two point seven hundred bus band interest. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion for twelve point five, approve proposal to provide special education legal services, Thomas, Drowhan, Waxman, Pettigrew, and Mail LLP. Tom, Billy? Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the proposal for special education legal services for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year from Thomas, Drowhan, Waxman, Pettigrew, and Mail LLP, attorneys at law, according to the following terms. Up to ninety hours per year, fourteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents annual retainer. Above ninety hours per year, two hundred and twenty an hour for attorney services, one hundred and five an hour for paralegal services. Litigation services and non-retainer matters, two hundred and twenty per hour for attorney services, one hundred and five per hour for paralegal services. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute the proposal. All those in favor? Opposed? Next on the agenda, privilege of the floor. Any board member issues? And then we don't need an executive session, do we?
Yes.
Oh, we do. And to re-?
No.
I need a motion to go into executive session. Jeremy, Billy? Be it resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent to not reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person or persons. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you all for coming tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.